Make sure that you have silenced your cell phones. All right, did you start the recording? Common Council of the City of Glendale is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Tristan Latona from Troop 393.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the.
Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
He has to be excused this evening.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Thank you. All right, the first item of business tonight, I want to extend a welcome to Boy Scout Troop 393. There's quite a few scouts joining us tonight. I think a number of them are working on one of their merit badges, and so they're attending our meeting this evening. First thing on our agenda is a public comment. Oh, that is correct. Thank you very much. Okay, before we get into public comment, we actually had. Alderwoman Shaw reached out, someone who's served in a number of capacities in the city, had passed away, and she asked for a moment of silence. I'm going to turn it over to Alderwoman Shaw.
A former Glendale Days Committee member who's done a lot for the city while he was on the committee. Terry Kreczek had passed away from a sudden heart attack, and I'd like to have a moment of silence on his behalf because he had been on the committee for a number of years when it was four days.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to public comments. This is the part of the meeting where Glendale residents, business owners, and property owners are invited to speak to the mayor and council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to on a non-agenda item? All right, if you're joining us on the Zoom and you'd like to participate in public comment, you can unmute, state your name and address, please. All right, seeing no one wishing to be recognized for public comment, we'll move on with the items on our agenda. The consent agenda, we have two items, the adoption of the minutes and approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Avowed.
Move Alderman Galhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll consider the consent agenda approved without objection and move on to our new business. We have five items of new business this evening. The first is the review of the 2024 general obligation bonds and outstanding debt obligations, and I will turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. We're joined by Jalen Lee, she is our finance manager, so I'll have her speak to the 2024 bond closing here real quickly. So the purpose of tonight is just to review the actual debt that was issued for 2024 in comparison to the parameters resolution that was approved prior to that. And then I'm just going to have a brief discussion, if you want to come up, Jalen, as soon as she is done, just about the future borrowing forecasts and CIP projections for the city for the next 20 years.
Thank you.
Person is with.
Typically, when you start speaking.
There you go.
So annually, city issues debt to fund the previous year's capital improvement. The resolution includes the anticipated interest rate of 4.5% and the principal payment schedule from 2025 and expiring in 2034 for the 4.82 million insurance. The loan closed with an interest rate of 3.296% and the repayment scheduled below and enclosed in the attached documents.
So we had a very successful bond closing. We got a much lower interest rate than was anticipated by our bond council. So we just wanted to bring that forward, let everybody know the parameters resolution versus the principal earning. Obviously, it's 4.28 million, or $2 million. Interest is assumed to be about $900,000 for a total $5.7 million issuance that will expire in 2034.
Any members of the council have any questions regarding the borrowing? Alderman Galhard?
Just a clarification, so I noticed that the interest for 2025 is, you know, $310,000. So I'm just assuming that they they get the interest, most of the interest upfront, and then it lowers as it goes on.
Yes, every year it goes down slightly. It's doubled what it would be in 2026. It goes from 310 to 186, all the way down to $11,000 in the last year. So as time goes on, more principal is paid and less interest. I think the same is with our home interest loans, unfortunately, too.
All right, any other questions from members of the council? We also have several members of the council joining us on the Zoom. If you have any questions, you're welcome to unmute and ask any questions. All right.
No questions.
All right, thank you. All right, well, then, thank you very much for the report on the borrowing. Sounds like it was successful and within the parameters that we approved a few weeks ago, so.
All right, so I discussed that 20-year borrowing here.
Yes, I go right ahead.
So on the, one of the first attachments is the debt issuance scenarios from 2024 all the way to 2043. The first column over is existing debt issuance. That assumes the refinancing of the city hall debt in 2028. That's why that number is in red. So this isn't our actual debt right now, it's assuming a refinancing of the city hall. The next column over is the annual CIP debt that we would assume with our annual CIP program that the common council typically programs for five years out. So that line at 2028 is what has been tentatively approved in the five-year CIP plan. The next column over would assume an approximate $500,000 in community enhancement debt if the council wanted to start to borrow for parks improvements, pedestrians, and other improvements in the city. We just assumed a number of $500,000, and you see that number slowly gets up until you reach year 10, where it would be maxed out, and then it would stay at that number. This assumes, of course, the interest rate is the same every year, which it won't be, but you just make assumptions for these. The next column over assumes about an $8.4 million borrowing for the police department with the payments beginning in 2026. Slowly, we're going to have, or shortly, we're going to have to start planning for borrowing of a big renovation for the police department. Most of the infrastructure they have over there is failing. Bathrooms have been closed down just because they simply don't work. The plumbing, electrical, HVA systems are really running on the last leg. So we've got that tentatively planned for 2026. Next column over would be the total debt program. And if you scroll real quick to the next page, I'll just go over this real quick. This has the schedule for borrowing for squad cars, public works equipment for the alleys, about $100,000 a year. The last column is the other round to find in 2025, there's the completion of the I-43 project, so that's the 2.1 million. Other than that, there's miscellaneous random borrowing of about $300,000 that the common council does. As part of this, we're going to have to discuss in the future what to do with road reservicing. At our current funding level of about 400 to 450 a year, we do about 15% of what we should do to keep on track of a 20-year road reserving program. In this program, I enhanced it over the 20 years to get to about 1.5 million in the last five years of this. That brings us in better shape to about 50% around there of what we should be doing for road reserving. So this is just meant to be the initial part of a conversation to have for later down the road. Our roads are in pretty good shape. Charlie will say they're in pretty good shape, other than, you know, a few ones here or there, but we'll need to start doing more in order to keep up.
Did you take into account the fact that in seven, I believe, district TIF?
I have not.
That would, that would actually produce probably, what, 1.7 or 1.8 million a year in revenue?
Yeah, it's a $2.2 million tip. We're about 27% of the, of the taxing district, of all the taxing districts in Glendale. So it's probably about, you know, $550,000 for the city that will come in. I did not account for that in here. This is just a worst-case scenario of this is what we would need to spend. How we allocate that operation capital would be a decision to be made a couple of years from now.
Okay. Any other questions on the 20-year projections? Folks joining us on the Zoom have any questions? Alderman Schmelsling, go.
Thank you. I saw in the packet, there was the attachments, the final levy, which showed the. It's from the Baird, and it showed that the mill rate would kind of go from $1.88, kind of work its way up a little bit, then work its way back down. Did that include the road additions in like 2034 and such?
Yeah, the Baird document only includes what was in the, in the approved capital plan. It does not include any increase in road reserving and width. And if we start to increase road reserving, that will have to be taken into account. It does include an $8.4 million police station remodeling, though.
Okay, so it does include the police station. All right, because I was kind of curious, because I saw the mill rate went up a little bit and came back down. And that, that explains it now, because if we are going to add more to do the roadwork, I'm assuming it would probably stay more around that, that higher $2 per $1,000 of life value if we were to continue to bump up and support our road. Okay, thank you. That helps give me an idea of what the tax impacts would be of doing a little bit more, which we'll probably need to do at some point for the road.
And I have a full mill rate analysis with these road stuff working in there. I didn't present it at this time, just because this was initial conversation, but certainly that's worth a discussion point when we get to that.
Good reality check, what are we at? So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the council? All right, thank you both for your report. All right, the next item is an authorization to execute an intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the 2024 Republican National Convention. Actually, today at the ICC meeting, the representatives from the Milwaukee Police Department were discussing the perimeter, the expanded perimeter, the smaller perimeter, all those different things with us so that we were aware. And so I don't know who's presenting this. Typically, the chief has, but the chief's not here. I don't know if Captain Fugman was going to be discussing it, or.
Will we just read the background analysis?
Sure, if you would, into the microphone, though.
The Republican National Convention is being held in Milwaukee, July 14th to the 18th of '24. Milwaukee Police Department has requested assistance from local police departments to provide public safety during the RNC. We have tentatively committed to providing two officers per day for general security and three officers as needed as part of the North Shore Mobile Field Force. Milwaukee Police Department will reimburse the city for the salary and benefit costs, including any overtime for officers assigned to the RNC. The department plans on providing officers to the RNC on overtime to maintain police coverage within the city. The actual number of officers assigned to the RNC will be determined by Milwaukee Police Department later date. The current overtime rate for a police officer to include benefits is $92.11 per hour. And attached is the intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the 24 Republican National Convention between the city of Milwaukee and the city of Glendale. And then the agreement needs to be signed by both the mayor and the police department representative.
All right, thank you. Open up any questions from members of the council? None? Okay. Could we get a motion then to approve the intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the 2024 Republican National Convention?
Avowed.
Thank you. Move Alderman Galhard, is there a second? Second, Alderwoman Shaw. Any further discussion?
I have a question, actually, for Captain Fugman. During the RNC, I know there's a two-week window in which Milwaukee Police Department is not allowing anyone to go on vacation. It's going to be an all-hands, on-deck sort of deal. I was wondering if we're going to be doing the same thing, since we have multiple delegate hotels in the city of Glendale. All of our police will be on duty, all of them working shifts, no one's taking vacation during the RNC.
We have no off for a week, not two weeks, but for the full week, we will not have any offs.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the IGA with the city of Milwaukee, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Motion carries, the agreement is approved, and I will get that signed later tonight. The next item is resolution establishing property tax pilot agreement policy, and I will turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Several months back, the common council discussed previous pilot agreements that were approved, which the purpose of those were to compensate the city for essential services when properties were switched from paying property taxes to become tax-exempt. We have around four or five of those that are approved and pay the city annually for said services. What we didn't have was a policy that sort of guided the staff through the process when a pilot agreement or when these circumstances and situations do arise. So we drafted a very general and vague property tax pilot program that says when a action is needed by the common council for action to change a use, which would then allow for a property to become tax-exempt, it is the desire of the city to enter into said pilot agreement to ensure that the property taxes come so we can continue to fund police and fire services as necessary.
I know this came forward because I raised the issue a while back. I was concerned as to why it seemed like our religious, we had a number of religious organizations that don't pay any taxes, and then we have other religious organizations that are required to have a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the city. And it, to me, it just, it felt patently unfair, but I do understand now, after a number of conversations and as we work through the development of this policy, why it is that when a religious organization purchases a taxable business property and wants to make it a non-tax property, that we do require the payment in lieu of taxes, so. So I'm comfortable with the policy, and I will certainly sign it if approved by the council. Are there any questions from members of the council? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the resolution?
Avowed.
Move Alderman Galhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is a referral to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission of a zoning map amendment by Doncha Holding Company, doing business as Silver Spring Dental Spa LLC at 6655 North Green Bay Road. And is this, Carl, are you handling this, or is Ken handling this? I see he is online.
Yeah, he's on the road. Unless something that I don't have an answer to pops up, I'll just take this one real briefly. Essentially, this is a request to refer this to the Plan Commission for rezoning for the Silver Spring property on Green Bay and Mill from B7 to R4. The permitted uses are listed there in the memo from Ken. The use is consistent with what the Plan Commission says, so an amendment to the plan, not sorry, the comprehensive plan is not necessary, and we were just looking for a referral to the Plan Commission for this zoning map amendment.
I just want to be educated. When it comes to a landmark type of property, how much can it be modified to still retain its landmark qualification?
Ken, do you have an answer for that? If you're able to answer, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the status of Milwaukee County landmark is an honorific, and so there, there is, there aren't any strict regulations as to how much a property can or cannot be regulated on the, to be a Milwaukee County landmark. That may be different for a property that's on the state or national register of historic places, but as a county landmark, a substantial internal renovation should not have any bearing on the property status on the, on the county landmarks list.
You had mentioned internal modifications, what about external modification?
I would have to investigate that further, but from what I've seen, from what the developer wants to do with the property, they don't intend on making any exterior renovations to the property at this time.
Thank you.
Alderman Schmelsling, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw in the pamphlet as well that it looks like they're looking to just essentially rehab it and make sure that it gets a good coat of paint. Looks like they're just going to do that sort of activity. And if that's the case, I think I'm happy that there's not, you know, something more drastic being done. It's always sad to see it move from something that was more like a community place, like the restaurant bar that it was. But at the same time, I guess I'm pleased that it's still going to be historic building, and they're going to maintain it. So I guess if it stays along those lines, yeah, I'd have no problem with it for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the council? All right, so the recommendation is that we refer this then to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission, and that we direct staff to schedule a public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, move Alderman Schmelsling, is there a second? Second, Alderman Galhard, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of referring this item over to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. All right, the next item now is employee handbook updates. I will turn it over to the city administrator and deputy city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'm going to turn this one mainly over to Charlie, Rhett, and Jessica on this one, other than to just introduce the topic. Starting about six months ago, staff in our meetings and at other times have spent our time discussing the employee handbook to ensure it includes everything, to ensure we can recruit, retain, and ensure that we can promote people throughout the ranks here in the city. As a result of those numerous reviews, discussion of maybe some of the shortcomings in some of the policies that are currently in the handbook, the staff here had spent a lot of time together thinking about creative ways to make and to continue to have Glendale be an attractive place to work. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, Charlie, and Rhett, and they can sort of go through some of the topics that go through. And if you guys want to move on from one, let us know, but go ahead.
In regards to the PTO, myself and the other department heads who were on staff at the time with the previous administration, we felt our input was not used to draft the current PTO policy. There were some initial discussions held up front, and then we were just told it's going on the agenda, and it got passed. So once we implemented the PTO policy, there were some issues that we started to run into over the past couple of years that we've been using it. Some of those points have been, there's no short-term disability for employees. There's a lack of time to accumulate for any kind of long-term illness because a lot of the employees were frozen at the time with what they had for sick bank, and they weren't with us for a very long period of time. And there's no way really for them to build up amount of time that would help them in that department. Shift work in the police department, which Rhett can elaborate more, has been very difficult to try to run under PTO planning when it comes to PTO program, when it comes to planning, knowing how much time the employees have and time remaining. So Rhett, I don't know if you want to add a little bit more to that, that you've seen over there.
Yeah, I think PD right now is dealing with separate, and bargaining side that's dealing.
The microphone a little closer to you, it's picking up about every other word, which means the folks on the Zoom can't hear you.
So the, thank you. The PD side, we're dealing with, the bargaining side is still dealing with vacation, your general sick time. We switch over to PTO, and for shift work, where our civilian employees and ourselves covering each shift with PTO is a very different process than vacation. The planning ahead, which is what we're trying to do, what we typically do at vacations, now it's when someone ends up calling sick or their, their kids are sick, there are things that they planned ahead for in the beginning of the year, and that will no longer can exist because we have to pull that back now because we're trying to project. So that has been quite a, a process for us to adjust to, and we've tried, we've done it for the last few years, and it's still, I think, to this day, most people at our side would say it's still a challenge for us to deal with that on a regular basis.
Yes, I've also heard from other municipalities, some of my, like, human resources roundtables either WCMA or with my WAPLRA, that previous municipalities that have considered PTO have decided not to go with it because they could not figure out a way for it to implement well with shift work in either police departments or fire departments. Or there have been some that have put it in place and then gone back to the traditional banks because it was just very hard for shift work. We've also, with the promotions outside of the union positions, it's very difficult. Again, like I said, whether they'll be able to have time off, or if they lose their current vacation-sick model, as well as a gap of other benefits that they would be losing from what was bargained in the union contracts and then promoting into the benefits that the city offers to the city employees. The gap is just, it's too big. It's a loss of benefits, it's a loss of payout time. And so it makes them difficult to make the decision to accept a promotion or consider taking a promotion. And that our current situation with a lot of vacancies coming up, it just doesn't help with retention or recruitment. And then the actual time that people have been taking off has been reduced due to the unclear picture of remaining time off. So we found out with the PTO program, more people are actually coming in sick, and they're not taking the time off because they're not clear when they're going to have that time available to them if something were to happen to a family member themselves. So I don't know, Charlie, you want to add?
Alderwoman Vukovich has her hand raised, so I'll go ahead and see if her question is now, before you move on. So unless it's when hands, rather call the person now when you're talking about what you're talking about in case, you know, not three topics ahead before they get to finally ask their question. Go ahead, Alderwoman.
This is about the PTO. When I saw this on the agenda, I did look back and see why we changed it. And I don't necessarily have a problem in, problem changing it back to vacation and sick as long as the issues are addressed, that the reason we, we did PTO in the first place. So one was, I remember, one was, there was a, a little bit of a a problem where people had, as just as Jessica said, people had accumulated a lot of sick time, but then upset when we don't pay out sick time. So they could accumulate it and, you know, and, and hit a ceiling, and they can use it for whenever they're sick or, you know, family leave or whatever is bad. But when they went, when they were leaving or, or going home, or, you know, leaving, it turned into an issue where they thought that they should get paid out sick. Or they would start calling in sick just to get rid of that time. The other issue was, and this is just what we were told, taking advantage of the sick time, where just like Jessica just said, now people may be coming in when they can, when they may be able to, you know, when they're sick. But I think I remember the opposite way, where people, which could come in, were calling in sick because they had a lot of PTO. So I just want to, I don't really care, for me, I don't really have a problem one way or the other, but let's just make sure that the reasons why we went to PTO are covered or we've addressed them when we go back to vacation and sick. That's all.
So I'll touch on both those points. The first one with the sick pay not being paid out at time of separation. We had a policy in place that if the separation was due to retirement, they were entitled to their sick payouts. If they left employment before retirement time, they did not get their sick pay, but they got whatever vacation was on the books at the time, which we called it the two different vacation and sick. With the current policy, same thing, they would be able to get any of the PTO that they had on books at time of separation. It did not need to be at retirement. The plan that we're proposing is essentially the same. They'd be able to get their vacation because it's accrued and it's earned, and the same thing with the sick. We've changed the amounts of what they would get, but that would need to be where they had eligible retirement and time of service with the city or WRS to qualify. So that's part of the retaining and retention portion that we've been looking at to try to bring a little bit of those benefits back again. Right now with the PTO, you, the most max that you could get was like 20-some days at time of, you know, at time of retirement, and that's it. And the second point that you were talking about with the sick time with them possibly using the system incorrectly, we found out with employees that did have frozen sick time, and it was frozen, and they could only use it if it was FMLA-eligible. So it was either use your PTO or use your sick time. There is a very huge increase with people pulling FMLA paperwork in order to be able to access that time. So the administration of that has actually been even more work than before because now we have way, way, way more active FMLA than we ever had before in order for them to access that sick time.
And to me, if I could make a quick response to that, too, is that, that's a great point and a great question. And what we tried to do with this, you know, sort of switching from PTO back to sick and vacation was do sort of a hybrid approach, which was to put four sick days in there. I believe in the collective bargaining agreement, everybody has 12. So we kept what everybody had in terms of their PTO. So we kept what everybody had in terms of their PTO, rolled it over to the vacation, but added four sick days to allow people to accumulate that where if they needed it on a yearly basis, it was there for them to use because they were sick, or if people didn't use it, it allowed them to accumulate it if they have a major medical emergency in the future, which the PTO doesn't really allow for an employee to do if they're going to be gone a month or so because they have a major surgery or a major health concern. That the goal was to try to bridge that gap a little bit, but not provide an overabundance of sick, but just enough to hopefully build up those balances a little bit where there was a little more give in the time off.
Alderwoman, do you have any follow-ups or?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I gotta process what he just said. That's all.
Okay. Well, I'll let you continue with your presentation.
I think I could chime in too, as far as the DPW, and a lot of, some of the previous things that were discussed, I echo as well. And, and one additional ones too is with the PTO, it, it only allowed employees off with three days advance notice to the supervisor annually. And, and if it was anything less than that, it would be called what was an occurrence, and therefore the employee should be written up, which obviously doesn't allow for a sick kid or anything that comes up within that three-day period. So that was problematic for us on several occasions. And again, I pretty much echoed everything else that we said earlier, but I think that was one of the, one of the things that we ran into as well.
Any other questions from members of the council, or do you have anything else in your presentation?
You have more items to cover if you want us to do that, or any other questions?
Keep going.
No, we got two questions here.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Schmelz, raise his hand now. Go ahead.
Thanks. I, I think just before I got to the DPW portion, I really see this as another way of bridging the gap for our, our uniformed officers who are bargained, I should say, officers from those that become officers who are not bargained, because it seems like that's really where we, we saw some gaps. And I know we've had issues before trying to promote because of that. So it seems like this really smoothes that over and brings it back where prior, we tried to address those case by case, but we still never really solved that problem. So I think this, this I think gets us back to that. I'm not used to a PTO type setup myself, and this is what I do, and, and I think that it, we don't have issues with, with our management with like the, you know, the sick kid situation, which is kind of understood. So, but I think if this helps bridge the gap, I don't see an issue going back to it as long as it's, it's as administrator or upset kind of balance. Still having the vacation and not as much sick perhaps. So just kind of my, my general thoughts. Again, kind of like what Alderman woman Vukovich said, if we can try to solve the problem by having better retention, by having us and having a promotion path for our police officers, is what it makes sense.
Thank you. Other questions around PTO before we head to move on?
One last question. I'm not understanding the, okay, the conversion back to, from PTO to vacation. Like how, so you're saying that you're going to?
Whatever they currently had in PTO, they're going to get now in vacation days, and they're going to get four additional sick days added into a sick bank.
And instead of it rolling on a payroll accrual, that we'll go back to issuing the lump amounts at the beginning of the year.
And just out of curiosity, if you do the lump sum at the beginning of the year, they run out, what do you do? How do you do that then? Or do you, do you like, get in the year, you give them a lump sum, they leave in July, but they've used all their PTO, do you make them pay back what is technically not earned for the year?
If it is, if they're in a position where they have not been with us for a year to have that accrual, it would be, yes, it would be pro-rated, and anything that they had used in excess of their time of employment and separation, they would owe that back.
Okay, and is that going to be in writing somewhere?
Yes, that's already how we ran the previous vacation policy was the same way.
All right.
Alderwoman Shaw?
Just curious, because I know I'm only realizing, though I know I says back in the day, but I know at one time Dick Maslowski had talked about skyrocketing benefit costs back in the day, because I know, you know, can't foresee the future until it happens. How is this system to go back? How is it going to ultimately hit the budget?
Yeah, I can talk about that. That's a good question. I appreciate it. So the, the biggest cost to part of this is the, is the payout at retirement. So a lot of those skyrocketing costs were post-retirement health insurance benefits, which are provided to employees who were hired prior to a certain date. In the collective bargaining agreement and employee handbook, those post-retirement benefits for all new employees after, what was it, 2019?
January 1st, 2014 for non-rep, January 1st, 2019 for union.
Okay, so we don't have the post-health, retirement health insurance that we used to have. In lieu of that, in the police union contract is this HRA program, which is the Health Retirement Savings Account. So every paycheck in a police officer's paycheck, $150 after five years is deposited into an account to help bridge the gap to pay for their retirement benefits when they retire at 53 to 65. In addition to that is a payout of, I think, 816 hours of sick in the police union contract. In this one, you're, in the current handbook, zero payment is allowed because we're on a PTO policy. So in the modified handbook, you won't, will only given out four sick days a year rather than 16. So the op, or 12, sorry, the opportunity to get to that maximum payout is going to be very limited. You essentially have to use none for like a 30-year period in order to get a decent payout. In this one, we've said the maximum payout will be 400 hours or half of your accumulated sick leave. So we tried to give something, but pull it back a little bit from what the union contract says because of those cost benefit things. And while we're talking about the, the cost here, the, in the police union contract is those HRA payments. So when somebody promotes out of the union, if they've received those payouts, which is basically deposited into a savings account for retirement use, they lose that when they're promoted to sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and all of that stuff. So the revised employee handbook would continue that for those who are promoted. We're going to have a lot of promotions because of a lot of retirements, and there's been a lot of talks and discussions about officers not wanting to leave the union because losing those benefits. It's a big cost if we don't get the most qualified people out of there to come in here. We see this as a cost. We see it as a bigger cost if we are not taking the most qualified employees and promoting them into the positions they should be in. So that's the balance that we have to go after.
Thank you, because I do remember those discussions, because one would be when Officer Lynch was promoted, and I just remember those discussions as well. And I know it's not Officer Lynch anymore, but that's how I remember him. And I just also remember discussions that we've always had, either when I was at Nicolay, and here, we always talked about OPEPs and how that was skyrocketing because of how things are changing with the economy. So that's, that's still in the back of my mind about the cost, but I do appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're, we're trying to be conscious of that, of course, and, and those HRA benefits, they, they only retain with an employee if they, they retire with the city as a protective service employee and retire after 15 years of service. We're proposing to add it for all other employees as well at $50 per pay period. And you have to work with the city for 20 years until you will get that benefit. This again will hopefully help with retention for an employee to stay with the city for 15 or 20 years and get that small paycheck, which if a public works employee, they have a hard job, retires at 62 or 63, helps them bridge the gap to pay for insurance until they reach Medicare eligible age.
All right, any other PTO-related questions? All right, we'll let you continue.
Well, we'll briefly, there's, there's a number of really small ones on here. I'll just cover the other big one real quick, which is the compressed schedule and flexibility in the workplace. So in the COVID year, post-COVID years, there's, there's a lot of employees who work from home and have flexible work schedules. We have a lot of people who are required to come to work. We have very few and limited opportunities for that. So what we're trying to do, as much as possible, create a compressed work schedule environment here at the city. You know, at the, you know, City Managers Association Conference, I would say more than half, almost two-thirds of the communities have had discussions or are implementing these sort of compressed work schedules to try to give some flexibilities on Fridays, whether it's Memorial Day, the Labor Day, or all year. There's two North Shore communities that have initiated a compressed schedule, and their village halls or city halls close at noon on Friday, and they do it for the entire year. What we're proposing here is to keep everybody at a 40-hour work week, yet close the city hall noon on Fridays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then do a compressed schedule in Public Works, and we would try to tailor that more towards a nine-hour workday with Monday through Thursday, and then a four-hour workday on Friday as well. So that's the proposal we have. We've written it up. Of course, the city hall hours aren't in the handbook. I haven't seen anywhere where we approve the city hall hours, but that could be a separate discussion that we talk about too.
All right, any questions for? It's the only concern I would have is, have we been documenting how many people come in on a Friday afternoon during the year to see will that negatively impact in terms of people pulling building permits or whatever other, coming in to pay water bills and those sorts of things? I know we're trying to automate more and more stuff, but what does Friday afternoon look like in city hall? I see the clerk.
I mean, I could talk because I see it the most, even though I'm not the first person at the counter, but Fridays are truly the slowest day, especially in the summer. I think those are the days that people, residents probably have dipped out of town to go on vacation, go away for the weekend. So they are a lot quieter. Obviously, you know, for times where we have an August election, we will, the staff who has to run the election will still be here. I mean, this is, you know, based on what the needs are, so it's not, we aren't going to cut our hours for early voting or anything like that. So if that's a concern, that won't affect it. I know there are municipalities who do only run four-hour early voting on Fridays, but we wouldn't do that. We would still maintain eight-hour day just in fairness to the residents, so. But that is probably the only time that we are busy is when there's, I don't, like the two weeks leading up to the August election, otherwise it's pretty quiet, so.
We'll be implementing online building permit program once, as well as a new payment for online utility bills. That will be much simpler than the current one that we have.
Any other items that you want to touch on? I mean, I saw like the uniform allowances here. You've already touched on a few of the others, so.
I can just run through these real quick. Uniform allowance, we're, we're suggesting to increase the supervisors for the police department to 750, which is the current one in the union contract from 550. I believe it's already been done that way for a number of years. The handbook wasn't updated. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, we mirrored what was in the contract starting last year on January 1st, 2023, but it just, the language wasn't updated in the contract.
And then the
Or the handbook.
Police desk clerks have historically been provided a $350 uniform allowance. We noticed it wasn't in there, so we're recommending that. While we're doing that, police, or Public Works is 250. We feel it should at least match what the police desk clerks are. They go through a lot of uniforms and a lot of wear and tear. Up there, a pair of boots is now, what, 300 bucks? So in one year, they'll use that just on boots, and then another year on, on clothing. Outside of that, training and conferences, we updated it to provide a little more detail. We included a light duty policy, a number of employees unfortunately are unable to work because of a work-related or non-work-related injury. We do assign light duty assignments. Thought if we do this, we should have a policy on that. We have now included a quote-unquote probationary period for 12 months, allow us to evaluate the employees. We haven't had one before. As part of this, when we hire an employee, we're there required to have a CDL, at least in Public Works and some other certifications. Now the city assumes that cost, and it's about a $4,000 cost. And if an employee leaves during the evaluation period and we spend a significant amount of money on training, we'll require them to repay us that back upon leaving. We've sort of streamlined the cell phone policy. We have three tiers. I've narrowed it down to two, which would be a 25 and a $50 payment. We're going to require, and we have been requiring more people to use cell phones as part of their work, and it's really a savings to do that rather than buy more cell phones. The $5 amount, when you, by the time you pay taxes on it, amounts to a couple bucks a month for people using their cell phone a lot. We've felt like streamlining it and putting a system in place was better. We eliminated the requirement that the city administrator approve outside employment opportunities, just that it doesn't interfere with your work here at the city, and you only do work for the city while you're here. We've expanded the policy on harassment, discrimination, and sexual harassment much more than it was in the past. I'm just running through these quick. If you want to stop me, please do so. We added about, you can't install prohibited software that's not authorized by the city, and that we're allowed to record you while you are working. We do have recording equipment throughout the city hall, so as part of the policy and acknowledgement, we would ask employees to acknowledge that. We did put in some firm language regarding tuition assistance. The, the previous or the current handbook simply says you can receive tuition assistance. It doesn't say how much, under what parameters. Here we say you're paid generally the community college or MATC rate for courses to go to. We establish what will reimburse for, and that you at least must get a passing grade or a C to be reimbursed. And if you, again, you leave the city within a certain period of time, you have to repay a percentage, and that percentage goes down as time goes by. Finally, we updated the health insurance eligibility. It used to be 1,200, or 1,200 hours in a year, you were eligible to receive health insurance benefits if you were the city employee. We derived, we, we redrafted it to be in compliance with the Affordable Care Act, which is generally 30 hours per week. So any other questions on the proposed updates?
Alderwoman Shaw, go ahead. Alderwoman Vukovich, you'll be next.
Question on, if somebody leaves early before they've, they've gotten all this training to what, how do you have them repay you if they haven't repaid you?
So they have a final paycheck that we will withhold it from.
Okay, just so they're aware that this is going to happen if it happens.
Yep, and it says that specifically in the handbook, that they'll withhold their final paycheck, which includes their vacation payout if they have any, and their final pay. If it doesn't fully cover the bill, we're probably stuck with it, but at least it's a incentive to hopefully stick around, unless they're really unhappy.
Alderwoman Vukovich, go ahead.
Is this, is this vote to approve all these? These changes?
Is to approve the new handbook, yes.
Okay, I, I, we got this on Friday. I, I read half of it. I mean, I, I mean, I personally haven't read the rest of it. And I don't know if I, like, can we get one more council meeting to read the rest of it? Because going from Friday to this, I thought these were just some small changes, and I read the, you know, the PTO, but there are some significant changes that I even, as I'm sitting here, have questions, not questioning what you guys are doing, but just making sure I understand what they're doing. I, I kind of want, just until the, the, is it going to affect anything if, and I, if I ask for this to be voted on next time, will it affect anything that you guys are doing? Or stopping some movement?
Oh, that's a very good question. So the only comment that I'll have is our next meeting is the organizational meeting, which is on the 17th. We were trying to keep that agenda as light as possible. We will have some public works contracts for roads to approve. If that's the desire of the council, we can certainly move it. If there's any discussion, I would recommend putting it on the May 13th agenda. We were trying to get this through primarily for the fact of, of the discussion on the compressed hours and closing the city hall early on Friday, so we can provide as much advance notice as possible. If there's a general concurrence on that part of this, we can certainly start to get the word out there. Other than that, most of these policies are going to start January 1st anyway. The vacation and sick is going to start January 1st, cell phone policy, all of these things, other than of course, sexual harassment and training and stuff like that, will start now.
Retroactive to this past January 1st?
We are, we, we will do it this coming January 1st, Jan, January 25 for the new vacation accrual, the cell phone stuff, all the other stuff in here, the HRA payouts, all of that stuff will start January 1st. We didn't want to sort of do it half through the year.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't necessarily need, think it needs to go to May. I just want to read it. I mean, and then if, unless we, I have other questions, and obviously I can ask you those questions, and I think it, and if we all have questions, we can call you, and it doesn't have to be a big deal. I don't know. I just, I mean, I, there's a lot here, and it does, I'm not usually a big, you know, questioner, but there's, there's a lot, and there's a lot of implications A lot of implications. For me that happens with this. And especially since we did this once. And we switched it and now I just wanna, I, I, I don't know, I, go ahead, Steve, I mean, sorry, Mayor, I'm, I'm done with my comments.
Alright, Alderman Schmelz, then go ahead. You're still muted, Steve.
Double muted, thank you, um, I, I'm a little bit with, um, Alderman Vukovich, uh, I'm. I know we got this, I think, uh, the public packet came out on, on Friday, and I think on Thursday we got the, the draft, so. Um, I, generally speaking, I don't have any issues with anything in particular, but if, if someone's a little uncomfortable, I'd say that's maybe. Um, give us another couple of weeks to review it and then we can come back at the next meeting, I don't think there'd be a lot of discussions, just be more offline conversations and. And the sorts, so, um. I guess I would, um, I'd move to lay this over to the next meeting, just to give everyone a little bit more time to review.
Okay, so Alderman Schmelz is making a motion delayed over to our next meeting, we'll vote on this on the seventeenth, so it'll give an additional nine days. Are, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second, Alderman Vukovich, any further discussion from members of the council? Alright, all those in favor of laying over the vote on the approval of the employee handbook to our meeting on the seventeenth, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no?
Is there a general concurrence to move forward with the compressed schedule with the possibility of closing the city hall noon on Fridays?
We, that, that'll be part of the vote next, in nine days.
Okay, if you wanna do that, we were just trying to give residents as much advance notice as possible, but if you don't.
When's the next newsletter going out?
It's a good question.
Not in the next nine days?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we will wait then for the whole thing.
Alright.
Yep.
Yep. Because if we're talking about approving it April seventeenth, we're not talking about closing until the first Friday in June, right? We started Memorial Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day is May twenty-seventh, so yeah.
Okay, the last Friday in May.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's the last, actually, the last Friday in May is after Memorial Day, so be general.
Can we give at least six weeks notice to the public before we?
It would be May thirty-first.
Or the May thirty-first, so yeah, I, I think it's plenty of time.
Okay. Alright.
And plus, according to, not many people come in on Friday anyway.
Yep, yep. Alright, so that concludes all of our new business, next is commission, committee, board and staff reports, start with the city administrator.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Alright, city attorney?
Thank you, nothing.
Uh, city clerk. Uh, Captain Fubin, anything from the police, police department, PD?
Nothing to report.
Alright, number one?
I'm just, uh. Police commi- I, I, I'm doing police commission, um, updates. We have, uh, we've gone through deciding our, kinda how we're, we want to go through. With the, um, the election, the selection of the new, uh, chief. Um, we are having a series of, uh, meetings. Notice that the commission, uh, police commission meetings are not on the calendar. So one of the constituents called and, and noticed that it was not on the calendar, but our next meeting, I believe, is. Uh. Uh. Think it's the eleventh or the eighteenth of April, not, it's one of the two.
Alright, thank you, uh, Jim isn't here, number three?
Nothing this evening.
Number four?
Nothing this evening.
Number five?
Nothing from me.
Number six? Alright, I, I just have a few things from the MMSD, the twenty twenty-three annual performance, uh, report. As well as a facilities overview, if anyone's curious about, uh, what happens after you flush the toilet or after you, uh, something goes down the drain. I've got information here from MMSD, welcome to anyone who wants to look at it. Alright, we are noticed to go into closed session to discuss, uh, uh, compensation of all employee positions. So can I get a motion to convene in closed session per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub C?
I'm moved.
Move, Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard, all those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
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 Oppose? We are now in closed session, and I don't believe we're gonna be voting on anything when we come out, so we'll reconvene in open session to have a motion to adjourn. The motion was made by Gelhard and seconded by Bailey to reconvene in open session at seven thirty-one PM. Um, it's now seven thirty-two, we've restarted the recording and, uh, we don't have anything to vote on from the closed session, it was merely just sharing with us, um, employee. Uh, potential salary adjustments, it'll be, um, an item on a future agenda, so at this point I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Alowed.
Moved by Gelhard.
Second.
Seconded by Bailey, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Stand adjourned at seven thirty-two PM.